Good morning, and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen meeting. I will have to remind myself of the date of Tuesday, January 15th. I'd like to remind everybody that in accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law, that this meeting is being both audio and videotaped, and is available through Norfolk TV if you so desire. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. With me this morning, it is nine o'clock in the morning, which is an unusual time. We have only one agenda item, and I would like to especially thank my two compatriots, Mr. Palumbo and Mr. Calcutt, for cutting into their morning in their normal workday. I'm the unemployed one at the table, so more readily available, but thank you, gentlemen, for agreeing to do this at this hour. I have Mr. Bragdon and Susan Jacobson with us as well this morning. We have one agenda item, and only one agenda item, and that is to discuss the parameters of a contract offer to our candidate for town administrator. So to start, I'd like to ask, we have a, Mr. Bragdon has done a yeoman's job of putting together a contract that is a combination of provisions that were in Mr. Hathaway's contract, as well as some provisions that we've found in other contracts as well. I know Kevin has had some input, I've had some input, Jeff has had some input, so this is his best shot at that collective effort, so we'll see if we can work it through. The process, we'll hopefully, we'll come to at least a majority agreement on what we would like to offer to the candidate. Candidate then can, this is not a ratification of the contract, let me make that clear. This is merely presenting an offer. The candidate then can add, subtract, delete, renegotiate, whatever he so chooses, will then come back to the board to either amend, agree, or however it may be, at which time then we would vote to approve the contract. So this is not an approval process, a submission process. Everybody in agreement on that?
Agreed.
Okay. All right, Scott, I'd like you to take us through it, if you would, please.
Sure. Before we do that, just kind of a little bit of background. A few months ago, Kevin and I went through a process of looking at a bunch of town administrator contracts, as many as I could gather, and kind of looked at what Jack had had his contract, and what the parameters were, and what other towns were. So that was a very helpful process as we started to look at this process. So I can, you know, I, without going into exact things, you know, generally the larger towns in our area, you know, the Dedham, Foxborough, Franklin, those kinds of towns, which frankly is our competition when we lose people, but they're in the 175 to, by the end of the contracts, around $200,000 for base. The smallest towns around are in the typically around 100 to 110, the very smallest towns out in the mid or western part of the state. And I did not get Millis data, they did not share that with me, so I don't have that one, but can say that most of the contracts have some car allowance, ranging anywhere from a car, you know, they get use of a car, to $3,600 a year, up to, the highest I saw was $7,200 a year. About, I'd say a third of the contracts have deferred comp in them. Trying to think of other things. Benefits typically are the same as whatever the town employees get, and those are the biggest things. Some of them have set payments for other things that they have to do, hearing officers and stuff like that. Jack's contract that Kevin and I looked at at the time was, you know, he'd been here a long time, so that contract was, you know, a lot looser. There were some things in it that I think, I don't mean to speak for you, Kevin, but I think we kind of agreed, like Jack had a 30-day notice period, which I think is not long enough, so this contract has a longer one. Jack's pay obviously was, you know, he'd been here a while. Jack also had deferred compensation. Jack also got $600 a month for car allowance, so that's kind of where we were. Other than that, the last thing is payouts for sick time. I'd say about half of the contracts have some kind of payout for sick time. So this contract that we're putting forth, first of all, it is a much more formal contract than what we had before. It's clear under Massachusetts law, if some part of it is found to be not applicable, the rest of the contract stays in place. The contract is for just over three years, it's three years plus the time between now and July. So it's generally a three-year contract. The base pay that I put in here is $160,000. That is less than what Jack is making now, would have been making come July. There is no deferred comp, while it says that we'll set up an account for him, this contract does not contain any deferred comp. It does contain $3,600 for a use of a car. It has a 60-day notice period. One of the things that we kind of looked for in Jack's contract when we were negotiating the, his exit, was that there was no provision for involuntary termination without cause. This contract has that. It does come with four-month severance, so if you guys determine at some point that it's not working out, but it's not at a point where it's for cause, he hasn't stolen, or something like that, you could exit the contract with four-month severance.
That's a mutually agreeable component.
Between, that is, no, that is if you guys want to do it.
If it is involuntary, right.
It's involuntary, but without cause. So a lot of the contracts do have that. They vary anywhere from three to six months severance, because you do want to, you know, you're not giving them long-term notice. Contract does contain a provision that if, as the contract ends, they get six months notice if you're not going to renew, and six months notice if you're going to negotiate, if you don't give them the six months, they do in fact get six months worth of pay if you edit at the end, for instance, and give them notice. That's pretty typical, I mean, that's only fair if you're not going to renew a contract. And, look to be sure, I think those are the basic provisions. Leave, personal leave, etc., is the same. Vacations, four weeks. The vacation I see in other contracts is between four and five weeks. Yeah, so I set this at four weeks. There is a, obviously a provision for termination without, with cause, rather, which does not pay. There is a section in here for general authorized expenses that they may have if they have dues or other expenses. It's a very standard thing. It does have a provision for a performance evaluation, it's saying that you guys are going to do a performance evaluation. It does give indemnification to the signee unless they've broken law or went against the conflict of interest law. We're not going to cover them for that, but other than that, we're going to cover them. There is a residence provision in here that says, without an amendment by you guys, that the candidate's not going to move further away than they currently are. I see that in some contracts. Some contracts say town bordering, some contracts they really want the person in the town, but I put in here something that says they wouldn't move further away, but that would be subject to.
That's a concern either, I mean, given where he is now, but it's good that that's in there, it's good.
Yeah, he's in Millis now, so if he wanted to move further away, obviously, if, the major concern with that, and I don't, he's been there a long time, I don't think he has any intention of moving, but if the candidate decided they want to move down the Cape, for instance, that's a significant change in working arrangements, and this would stop that unless you guys approve it.
Great.
Question on that one?
Yeah.
I sometimes get hung up on the intent versus the literal translation.
Yep.
Let me use my associate, Mr. Calcutt, who is, it's okay to reference the fact that you're, who is considering building a new home.
Yes.
He's moving from one side of town to another side of town. Technically, that might, that would be further away than he currently is.
Yes. It could be, I don't know where his house is.
Well, hypothetically.
Yeah.
So would that be in violation of this contract? If he were to relocate to the, say, near the Sherburne line of Millis, stay in the same town, but move to the Sherburne line, would that be in violation?
If it's further away, it would be in violation of this.
I think we need to clarify that, you know, that may sound nitpicking, but I would not want him to fall into a, I don't know anything. I don't think he would, because he's right, he's been there a long time, but.
You can also, in this vote, to approve anything you want.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't want him to get, if he moves two miles to the other side of Millis, that to me would be in violation of that clause.
So we could put in miles, you could put in surrounding towns.
Yeah, I think surrounding towns is pretty good.
Surrounding towns, okay, you see my point?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And then the.
Is that okay with you?
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I think so, is that the language we're using?
Yeah, I've seen that in other towns. Then the rest of the contract is general provision, so again, the rest of his benefits are the same. Now, the other thing I think that you may want to talk about is, I put in the base of 160, and then annual increase is tied to what the other non-union employees get. You may want to do that. I did that because there is, there has not been any variability since I've been here, but there could be. Could be a very low, you know, it could be that there is, say, negative cost of living, and so you don't give a cost of living increase, or it could be there's a, you know, some huge inflationary period. This allows you to, this allows us to vary it, but it is also, you know, that percentage is subject to town meeting vote, so it's, there is that control. Some towns, and the other thing you could do is put in a set percent. You can say it goes, he's making 162, and, you know, whatever you want. Some towns do a percentage, some towns, you know, tie it like this, some towns give an actual amount, so you guys can do whatever you want, but this is the way that I put it in. That's, I think that's the other provision that you may want to think about, how you want to tie that increase.
Anything else?
That's the contract. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, it's, I would suggest we go back to the beginning and work through each of these, and see if we can come to an agreement on these areas. So is there anything on page one that, I think that one's pretty straightforward? Jeff?
No issue.
Kevin?
No issue on page one.
Page two.
The only question I had on page two was, is it customary to do lump sum payment in the event that there is a separation as opposed to get paid for regular intervals?
To me, that is important, because you don't, if you're terminating employee employment, you want the employment to end.
Correct.
With all payments and all of that stuff, so you, so if you're terminating a person's employment today, we pay them out, and then they're done. If you keep them on the payroll, then potentially they could claim other benefits, workers' compensation or other sick pay.
It is standard in the corporate law.
To me, I always like to cut it, pay it, and then you're done with it, and then they're done with their employment. You no longer have obligations.
I completely agree. Comfortable?
I'd like to propose, we take another look at the starting base salary at the bottom of page two. Coming in at $160,000 is exactly where Jack, our 15-year veteran, was at this time, would have been going up to 165 in July, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott?
Jack, are you talking about Jack?
Yep.
Uh, is it Jack? Jack would be at 165 now. FY '19, which is where we are, is 165. Plus, he had a $8250 deferred compensation payment due. Plus, he got $600 a month for a car, so that was his compensation. So this is less expensive than that. You know, current state law does not allow for us to ask specifically what people's salaries are.
Right.
So I did not do that. I believe that this gives the candidate a modest increase. I don't think it's massive, but a modest increase, but I can't confirm that for sure. He's got a senior job in a large, large town, I suspect he's well compensated.
Right.
So this is five grand less under the current pay, plus $8250 less for the deferred over what Jack was making, plus the $250 a month less for the car. So that's the comparative.
Do you have a counterproposal?
I'd say a counterproposal of 145 would be what I would propose.
No, I mean, I just would ask, in terms of the justification for that, and I think what I'm hearing is that if you look at the difference between the compensation of the senior, the more senior staff member who's left the town, and, you know, this individual, you know, it'd be pretty substantial if you look at the deferred compensation, the difference in the car allowance, plus there's also some difference in base, that's pretty substantial, and I think it's commensurate, in my opinion, with the difference, you know, that difference in terms of experience and such.
I agree with Mr. Palumbo. I think that 145 would actually, while I don't know his salary, I would guess that our compensation package would be, actually, I think that, I have looked into Franklin's compensation, I talked with the town manager, while I have not asked specifically the gentleman's salary, but I suspect 145 would be below what he's making today. That would be my guess. I think a fairly educated guess. If you wanted to go to something, if the one six, if the six is the issue, and you wanted to go to 158 or 155, I would be willing to accept that, but I think 145 would be below what his car compensation is. My guess. Personally, I am comfortable with, I think 160 is a fair recommendation. I agree that I don't think the whole package should be equivalent to what Jack had, I agree with that. This whole package is not equivalent to what Jack had. So I'm comfortable with 160, but if you wanted to go to 158, or for whatever reason, that made everyone, that took care of them.
Okay.
That's just my opinion, so, let's see if we can get a decision on that.
I would adjust the proposal to 155.
Mr. Palumbo?
I'll support 158.
155?
158.
158. Can we split the difference?
158, that's fine.
Okay, I'll support 158. Anything else on page two? Page three.
I had no issue with that page.
Kevin?
For the automobile, I imagine that we provide an option for a town-owned vehicle as opposed to getting a payment for whatever vehicle that the applicant chooses, correct?
Well, this doesn't allow for that. You can put that in, if you're using a current vehicle, the only vehicles available would be one of the 1990s old police cars, which I don't think are.
Crown vics.
We drive them around the town a little bit, but you sit on the ground when you drive those, and they're perfectly fine to drive between buildings, but I think you'd end up paying more if we released them a car than the 300 bucks, but that's, but towns do either, they can provide them with a car or not. There's a few towns that don't, don't do it at all, and reimburse for expenses.
Yeah, just an inquiry, I mean. I mean, I'm with the way to--
Yeah, it's a fair question. We used to do that. There was a point in time where we started Jack with a car allowance, we went to a town car. It was ground mixed. We ended up spending more money repairing it than it would have cost us to do the allowance, because those cars are well-worn, as Chief Stone will tell you, because he's constantly telling us how they need to go away. They're terrible in winter, you know, they're rear-wheel-drive cars, you know, we're trying to phase them out. We don't have any other vehicles, so unless we wanted to purchase one, this is why we went back to the allowance, because we were actually spending more money. I'm okay, I don't think it doesn't matter. If you want to put in as an option, that's fine.
I mean, if it's not fiscally feasible or not as pertinent, then I don't want to go down that road if it's not something that we have as an open option that gives us a better fiscal position. But the other question I was going to ask was our ability to define the type of vehicle. Like you had just mentioned, I mean, having something that works well in the snow is pretty important.
Mm-hmm.
And in this contract, it leaves it kind of wide open to whatever you feel would be best. Is it a benefit to identify that it should be something that is good to be able to use in the snow, or is that even feasible? Again, more of an inquiry, not a proposal.
Well, if you're, if the agreement is to his personal car, I don't know how we could stipulate what he drives.
Mm-hmm.
The only other vehicles that I know we have, I mean, the building inspector's was a four-wheel drive, but that thing, you know, they had to weld metal plates to the floor to keep the snow out. Do you have any spare vehicles, Chief? I mean, I don't know of any, I mean, that we have that would be follow, the point's well-taken. I mean, he's going to drive in bad weather. I don't know of any vehicles that we have that could be used for that, are there?
It could be 100,000-plus miles, and then you always multiply that times four for hours on the engine and everything else, all the air system.
Yeah.
To Kevin's point, I would say that you might want to consider saying that all vehicles that could be, could make the trip from wherever he is, wherever he lives to here, all-wheel drive or something, I think that's probably not a bad idea to say. What if a vehicle gets, it shouldn't be like Maserati or something like that, it's not going to get anywhere in the snow, you know? It should be an all-wheel drive or full-wheel drive vehicle or something, because so it can manage posted or in storm, because we are about to go where the leak is.
Right.
See, I thought Maseratis were an all-wheel vehicle, huh?
They could be. I certainly wouldn't know.
I wouldn't either. Well, it shows you that I don't know either.
So we could put some wording in there that says something like--
Said vehicle must be able to travel in all kinds of weather or something like that. Is that okay?
Yeah.
You going to live?
I think so.
Okay. How many kids are sick?
None.
Oh!
Anymore.
Just the big one.
So are you willing to share? All right, so we're good there. Anything else on page three? So we'll add a little language in that. Scott? Okay. Anything else on page three?
Nothing for me now. Thank you.
Page four. This one's pretty, indemnification is straightforward, really don't have much issue with that. That's pretty much the required legal. Performance evaluation is also boilerplate. We can amend it if anyone sees anything they'd like to do differently, but--
And I also added in here that we indemnify, provided that the town administrator acted within the scope of his duties and did not commit any violations of law or violate the state's conflict of interest regulations.
Yep.
That we would not indemnify.
That's fine. And that should be in there. Anything there?
Nothing.
Page five.
I have the surrounding towns change.
There's no deferred comp payment in this contract?
No, it just says that I'll set up an account.
Well, he can make his own contributions if he so desires.
That's correct.
The rest is boilerplate. Any comments on page five? Jeff? I'm trying to get this far away, Kevin, don't take it personally, but I'm working my way right.
No offense taken.
We're pretty solid with that date.
That's the date, you mean, the February 27th?
Yeah.
That's the date he gave me.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything on the last page. Is there anything in here that you gentlemen would like to see in here that was not listed?
Scott, in my experience, and obviously this is not in the public sector, it's in the private sector, but it's pretty common practice to identify a 90-day introductory period in which, you know, there are certain accommodations made for review or acclimation or all those types of things in which, you know, if either party doesn't really feel that it isn't working out, they have more leeway to be able to terminate the contract. Is that commonplace for public sector contracts as well, or not so much?
I did not see that in any of the town administrator contracts.
Okay.
The town general policy has something in there around that.
Mm-hmm.
This contract allows you at any time to end it without cause with, for four months pay. So if it's not working out, that's the clause that you would use. I do think you want to be a little cautious if you're trying to attract somebody that, because if they think you can, they're leaving a good job, they think you're going to come here in two months, cut them loose, or that's a possibility, you got to make sure they feel comfortable with that. So that would be my comment. In the private industries that I worked in, they were getting away from that unless the person had a contract of, you know, a very senior executive, mainly because it used to be able to sort of get you out of a lot of the laws, discrimination laws. All of those laws now become effective as the day of employment. So any of the discrimination, any of, any of the other policies in state law become effective the first day. So the person is, any employee is covered by those things. So it is of less use than it used to be.
Gotcha.
And you have enough.
Okay.
I'll just, I know you're there, but I'll just pipe in, because I have a lot of experience in that, in the corporate world. We were not able to do that. What we did was we tied it to pay increases. And so we said that at the end of, 90 days was basically your X salary, after 90 days you went to Y salary. That was the way that we found our, that was the only way that we found that we could put some type of conditioning on a person coming into a position. It wasn't in any senior management contracts. We would have never been able to attract a singles manager under those conditions, never, not a good or bad person. No one would take a single contract like that. It was only done for employees. And to Scott's point, I suspect that they don't even do that anymore. There's just too many issues around it, and, but I think we've moved past it. But it was, the 90 days was common practice, but we always, at least at Etna where I was, we always did it based on pay raises. So we'd bring them in at a lower level, and 90 days, bump, bump, bump.
Got it.
Scott, was there a reason why you didn't use the actual title as vice chair and clerk? It says member, member.
No. I'm happy to put that in. What, Kevin is--
Clerk.
Clerk. Jeff is vice chair.
As I'm concerned, you can call us all members.
Well, I'm happy to make that change.
Because in my view, we're all members. In fact, I would prefer that. You guys all right with that?
And although Kevin would be easier to play in Scrabble with only three letters, it's K-E-V-I-N.
Yeah, there you go. Did I spell it wrong?
Yes, you did.
Uh-oh. Sorry, apologize for that.
No worries.
Yeah, I mean, what Jim says is fine with me, I just, you know, prior contracts and pretty much everything we sign has vice chair, clerk, et cetera, whatever.
Yep.
Whatever the board decides.
Whatever, doesn't matter.
Happy to--
Jeff, anything else that you would like to see in here?
No.
Kevin?
No. I would just preface a vote for approval to be contingent on a background check that's currently in queue.
Accepted. You agree?
Absolutely, yes.
Yep, we're in agreement. All right. May I have a motion to approve this as an offer, subject to ratification at a future meeting and subsequent background check?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have no further business, and we have this gentleman that's feeling very under the weather, and another guy that's got to go to work. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.